Roll call.
Commissioner Duncan.
Here.
Chair James.
Here.
Commissioner Aguilar.
Here.
Commissioner Jensen.
Here.
And Commissioner Heck is absent.
All right, are there any corrections to the agenda?
Uh, no corrections, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Is there anyone in the audience who would wish to address the Planning Commission on an item that is not on the agenda this afternoon but does pertain to, uh, Planning Commission If you would come to the seat here and give your name and address, please.
Amy Young, oh.
In seat. If we don't like what you say, it goes over like this.
Amy Young, 10441 Broken Oak Court, Penn Valley. I just haven't seen the agenda, I'm sorry. I only found out about this yesterday, so I'm not prepared, so will I have a chance later to make comment, or?
On, on the bike park issue?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
When the public hearing opens?
Oh, okay, I don't know.
Come right up here.
Okay.
Okay? And anybody else who hears that item, same goes, all right? Okay, there's nothing, no commission business and no consent items, so we have a public hearing on a, uh, for this project as an application to the Planning Commission seeking an amendment to an approved permit, A.P. seventeen zero 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 five, use permit comprehensive master plan for the existing Western Gateway Park property in Penn Valley. The project proposes a new element, a bike park, within the existing Western Gateway Park. And before we begin the presentation, I'd just like to make an announcement. My wife was a former board member on the park. She was, served a four-year term that ended approximately three years ago, and that would not, uh, impact my judgment or consideration today, so I just wanted to make that announcement. And with that, I'll hand it to staff. Janine, are you gonna do the presentation?
I am.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair James. Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Janine Martin, Nevada County Associate Planner. I'm happy to come before you today to present the request to amend the approved comprehensive master plan for Western Gateway Park. The project for your consideration requests to add a bike park within the existing park lands. The project includes a management plan component to ensure that development and use of the bike park would not adversely affect landmark oaks, landmark oak groves, or the seasonal drainage that passes under the existing access roadway. Western Gateway Park is located between Highway twenty to the north and Penn Valley Drive to the south. It is just west of the Penn Valley Village Center, and it is in the Penn Valley Community Region. The bike park would lie within the north-westly portion of the park, shown approximately here in red. The park outlined here in red as well is comprised of two parcels, one just over seven acres here, and one just over eighty acres. The general plan and zoning designation for the eighty-acre parcel are both recreational. The zoning designation for the seven-acre parcel is residential agricultural with a one-and-a-half acre minimum parcel size. The general plan designation for that piece is residential. As you can see from the slide in front of you, the majority of the surrounding properties share the residential agricultural zoning designation for this piece, and most of these parcels are developed with single-family residential uses. Western Gateway Park District was formed in nineteen seventy-four. It encompasses roughly one hundred and twenty-three square miles of Nevada County. The eighty-acre portion of the park was donated to the county for public park purposes by Boise Cascade, the developers of the Lake Wildwood community. In two thousand and five, the seven-acre parcel was transferred to the park district for passive recreation and open space uses as a partial in lieu payment for the westerly-adjacent Valley Oaks subdivision park and recreation fees. While intended for passive recreation and open space purposes, the parcel has retained its residential agricultural zoning designation. Over the years, Western Gateway Park has added new amenities to their lands as opportunities have arisen for them to do so, and indeed, they have filled the park up. The park provides a variety of outdoor recreation uses and activities for residents for the Penn Valley Community and for the county residents at large. No user fees are assessed at park entrances, however several portions of the park are available for reservation for private use and special events. This includes the disc golf course, which is shown here in the middle, uh, tennis courts here, open lawn areas here and here, could be rented for weddings and baby showers, that type of thing. Tennis courts, picnic and open lawn areas, disc golf course, buttermaker's cottage, and the stage pavilion area are all available for private use rental. There's also ball fields up here that are used for little league and softball leagues. There's bocce ball courts. It's quite, quite a full, full-use park. The bike park is proposed to be open from seven a.m. to ten p.m. on the weekdays, and seven a.m. to seven p.m. on the weekends, and this is to ensure that the project complies with the Nevada County noise standards for both daytime and evening. The park anticipates between ten and fifteen users of the bike park at any given time during the weekdays, and forty to fifty users on the weekends. Special events, if any, are anticipated to have up to fifty participants, with the potential for up to seventy-five participants, if it can be shown later that seventy-five participants would not exceed county noise standards. The westerly side of the park has its own access roadway, parking lot, and restroom area. Currently, these are used almost exclusively by dog park visitors, with some disc golf course users and walkers, et cetera, use this as well. This picture here shows just a little portion of the dog park area, and this loop is existing Existing parking has twenty-nine spaces. The project would expand the parking lot to forty-three spaces in this area of the park, three of which would be ADA accessible spaces. Additionally, the existing access roadway would be improved to better allow two-way ingress and egress for safety purposes into this area of the park. When the project was originally submitted to the county, bike park features were proposed less than ten feet from the property line that was shared with the Valley Oaks subdivision on the, on the west side there. County staff encouraged the applicant to redesign the bike park, to move features away from the shared property line to provide a buffer between the uses. The goal of the project components is to create a unique riding experience where trails are within the natural setting created by the existing vegetation. In order to achieve this goal, the bike park has been thoughtfully designed to take advantage of the natural landscape, with trails and features planned to wind through the trees. Just like to point out here, a lot of people have asked me, is this like a concrete skate park, bike park? And it is not. It is, it is truly meant to be a natural, in-the-woods experience, riding on earthen This thoughtful design provides additional benefits. The bike park features have been moved to a minimum of eighty feet from the westerly property line, with the features planned eighty feet away nestled into existing vegetation. This vegetation will provide natural screening of the bike park elements from the westerly-adjacent parcels. Here you can see, one of the closest features would be in this heavily treed area, another just across the access roadway would be here. Here's one, and here are two more, very much taking advantage of the natural vegetation. The bike park proposes six elements that would appeal to riders of all levels and ages. The beginner, intermediate pump track is shown in yellow. It's planned as two or more continuous loops of earthen berms and smooth earthen mounds that bicyclists can enjoy without pedaling. Different loops would offer access for different abilities and ages. The mountain bike skill zone, here in blue, would have obstacles similar to those that would be found on the trails, but they would be in an area that they could be practiced in a more controlled environment. These might include such things as balance features, teeter totters, mini boardwalks, or, or rock drops. The dual slalom tracks are shown in orange. The starting point for these is planned right here, just to the north of the intermediate and beginner pump track nestled into the vegetation. Start mounds would be constructed of soil and boulders and be up to six foot tall. The dual slalom is a long dual track with identical side-by-side features, designed for two people to race against each other. The jump lines are shown here in brown. They would be a series of trails designed with various degrees of difficulty. There'd be beginner trails, intermediate ability trails, and more advanced skill level cyclist trails. Most elements and bermed trail sections in this area would be between one and three feet tall. Some may be up to five feet tall in the advanced skill level trail. The single track flow zone is the one at the most northerly portion of the park. It would consist of looping flow trails constructed on grade, only minor bermed corners and bumps to create interest for riders as they enjoy the shade and, and the wooded area. The loop trail is an existing trail of the park. It would be repaired and maintained as part of the bike park project. It would provide connectivity between all zones of the bike park, as well as into existing areas of the overall park, and to the existing bike path that runs in front of the park. The bike park is proposed within an area of the park that is predominantly foothill oak pine woodland and blue oak woodland. It's interspersed with annual grasslands. The blue oak woodland is considered a landmark oak grove, for the most part. That's here at the north. This landmark oak grove has three individual landmark oak trees within it, and to ensure that these oaks and the grove itself are not negatively impacted by the development or the use of the bike park, the project biologists recommended mitigation measures, prohibiting trenching within the drip lines of these trees, limiting trails width, trail widths within the grove, requiring a six-foot setback to tree trunks, requiring equipment to be placed outside of root zones to ensure root compaction isn't an issue. And it also requires annual monitoring by a biologist for a period of up to five years to determine if the, the health of the grove or individual trees are being negatively impacted. If so, a conservation easement would be required, and it would be established in a more sensitive area of the park, um, that's about seven hundred feet easterly in that northerly strip of, um, seven-acre parcel. In addition, a seasonal drainage exists under the existing access roadway, and because this roadway would be required to be widened to better provide two-way ingress and egress, mitigation is proposed that would require work to be done in the dry season. Waddles would need to be installed to ensure materials don't pollute the water, and equipment would be required to be placed at least fifty feet away from the seasonal drainage. Proposed conditions of approval would ensure that all potential project-related impacts to these sensitive resources would be less than significant. To determine if the project would be in compliance with the noise standards established in the Nevada County Land Use and Development Code, a noise study assessment was prepared by J.C. Brennan and Associates. The study included ambient noise measurements at the western property line of Western Gateway Park, and it also had noise measurements taken at an existing park in Folsom. Using the Folsom Bike Park data and the ambient noise levels measured at Western Gateway Park, the acoustical specialist determined that noise generated by twenty bike park users would be in compliance with both daytime and evening noise standards. With only ten to fifteen bike park users anticipated during the weekdays, bike park hours can be allowed to run from seven a.m. to ten p.m., which encompasses both our daytime and evening noise timelines. That would be Monday through Friday. The noise study determined that noise generated by fifty bike park users would comply with the county's daytime noise standards, however, it would exceed evening noise standards. As such, with forty to fifty anticipated bike park users at any given time on the weekends, bike park hours are required to be limited from seven a.m. to seven p.m. to comply with our county noise standards. That would be on the weekends. The original project proposed special events potentially having up to seventy-five bike park participants. However, the noise study determined that with this many riders, special events could exceed both the daytime and the evening noise standards. A condition of approval is therefore proposed that would limit special event participants to up to fifty, um, ending the event by seven p.m. However, the condition of approval contains a provision that would allow a future noise study to be performed at Western Gateway Bike Park once it's been up and operating. So it would be onsite under existing conditions. Um, if that noise study showed that additional riders would not, um, fall outside of our allowable noise standards, then additional participants could be allowed, and/or the hours for the events and/or weekend hours could be extended into the evening. As included in your staff report and the memo that was provided to you today, there has been quite a bit of community support for the bike park. The main theme of these support letters has been health benefits for outdoor exercise and recreation, quality family time, giving kids something to do and keeping them out of trouble. Uh, also, quite a few mentioned that they are currently traveling out of town to go to bike parks with their family, and they were really excited about the potential for visiting a bike, uh, bike park here and spending their, um, shopping dollars and, and lunch money in Penn Valley. However, I have also heard from a neighbor within the Valley Oaks subdivision that did not provide written comments to me. Uh, she asked staff to voice her strong opposition to the project. She would like the bike park to be moved to the easterly side of the park, either near the ball fields or maybe in the open areas. She's really concerned about noise. The addition of more people into the area near her could result in, um, increased theft or fires. She said she was told that this area of Western Gateway Park was a green belt and that could never be developed. She also stated that the county did not provide proper notice of the project. However, Nevada County follows sequo noticing requirements. The California Environmental Quality Act requires a notice of intent to adopt a mitigated negative declaration to be noticed in at least one of three ways. The county provides this twenty-day review in two of the prescribed ways. Staff mails the notice of intent to specific individuals who have requested it, and publishes the notice of intent in the Union, a newspaper of general circulation. As required for this project, the county prepared a notice of intent to adopt the mitigated With a twenty-day review period, the notice was published in the Union on April twenty-seventh, and it was also provided to responsible agencies and to the interested parties who had asked to be notified as the project moved through the process. Additionally, in keeping with the sequo ten-day public notice hearing requirements, staff also published a notice of today's hearing in the Union and mailed the notice to all property owners within five hundred feet of the park's boundaries to allow interested parties to attend today's hearing and provide comments to you if they, uh, if they desire to do so. The project has been reviewed for potential environmental impacts through a project-specific initial study mitigated negative declaration. It has been determined that with implementation of the proposed mitigation measures and conditions of approval, all potential project impacts would be mitigated to a less than significant level. The project furthers several of the goals and policies of the Western Nevada County Non-Motorized Transportation Master Plan and the Nevada County Bicycle Master Plan, and the project has been found to be consistent with both the recreation and residential general plan designation and the zoning designations as well, which allow a park through the approval of a use permit and a comprehensive master plan. Thank you.
Are there any questions of staff?
I have a couple. I certainly would agree that there are health benefits associated with a bike project within the park. On the surface, it sounds very nice, and by, increasing biking activities for youth and adult in our community is important. Um, I think it's a good, um, pursuit. But I guess one of the things that first jumped out at me were the hours, the seven to ten, Monday through Friday. Um, it's my understanding, um, dealing with parks, is that problems generally happen after dark in parks. Having unsupervised juvenile activity after dark in parks isn't very good. Um, I doubt the park budget is going to allow too much lighting to keep these paths illuminated clearly. So I guess that sort of jumps out at me right away. I mean, it seems just crazy. And, um, knowing how popular biking is in our community, um, organized events, yes, but there are also lots of unorganized events that attract a large number of bike users, as witnessed in the area in the Tahoe National Forest, where there could be a group of thirty to forty kids racing down the hills, having a wonderful time, screaming at the tops of their lungs because they're having such a thrilling ride. Um, so I think, on the face of it, it just seems a bit naive to think that this is not going to have any impact and that it's as benign as it's presented. So, I mean, that's my first, you know, my reaction to it. Um, and it's not that I'm necessarily opposed to it, but, um, I just think that it's a bit naive in some of the design that's been proposed.
I had a question on that. It was my understanding that the park had hours of dusk to dawn, which this does not comply with, so why did we go beyond dusk?
That is correct. The park hours are dusk till dawn, and it's actually assumed that when the park closes down, they're going to close down. However, um, our noise standards are set to specific times of, of day. They have specific time ranges, and so I wanted to be very specific about what was allowed. If the bike park wants, or the, the park itself wants to be more stringent on that, that's great, but, um, for a sequo document, having a, a kind of a loosey-goosey dusk to dawn, um, is, is difficult, uh, because, I don't know, uh, it's that thing where if you're the kid out there, you're, "It's not dark yet, Mom." Um, so, just having an actual, an actual time in here that's allowed, um, so that the project actually meets our county standard seems important, and then, you know, the reality is, when they go around to lock those gates, they go around to lock those gates.
Okay, I have some, go ahead.
I would agree with you, Janine. I think it is fair to have specific hours so people are clear as to what they can do and not do, and the public then is aware, if they hear people, that they know what's allowed and what isn't. And then it makes it easier for law enforcement to uphold what needs to be upheld. Um, but, I mean, there could be winter and summer hours, I mean, that's not uncommon to see that, those types of hours imposed, um, or, you know, following as to what the precedent there is, you know? What, what is dusk in the summer?
Any other questions?
No, no, no. What, what's a waddle?
Oh.
The, uh, the thing you see is they put alongside the, for the grading to keep the sediment from crossing. It's a little, uh, waffle, uh, grass.
It's a temporary thing.
Straw waddle, it's a resident control measure.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, I have one quick, one question for you, Janine.
Laura.
Janine, on, on the design, um, it, it says that it's a bar, a bike, um, area, um, with a flow track, so does that preclude pedestrian use in that area? I mean, is that restricted?
There won't be a monitor there to keep people off of it. I imagine that if there's, if there's nobody else using it, that, that walkers would, you know, want to take advantage. It's, it's going to be, you know, a very scenic and peaceful route that you would want to take. However, there will be signage posted at each of the bike park elements, um, noting difficulty of, of each element, because you don't want to, you know, you don't want a five-year-old going onto the advanced track on accident, but, um, so that, that should alert pedestrians to the potential for, you know, for being chased off by a bike, um...
Yeah, that could set up some conflict between the different user groups. Um, you know, if it's clearly a bike path and, you know, it's not being promoted as a multi-use trail to allow pedestrians to enjoy it also, I mean, that's one thing. It is common in this area that we have a history of providing multi-use trails rather than single, single use.
Mr. Duncan, it might be good to hear from the applicant regarding the intended use of the, the loop trail. I have seen your...
Okay, would that be the park district?
Yes, the park district, correct.
And there's nothing else? I had the same concern, by the way, that Laura had, that ten p.m. jumped out at me just like that. Having grown up next to a park, lived next to a park, uh, and know what goes on in parks, uh, ten p.m. is not a very good time, so I think we'd have to be able to choose a more restrictive time, but we'll have the applicant address that. So if there's no other questions, I'll ask if the applicant is here and if he would come up to the microphone, state your, your name and your address and...
My name is Richard Baker, and, um, I live at 15092 Mansonita Diggins Drive in Nevada City.
Okay. Are you speaking for the applicant?
I am the applicant.
Okay, all right, okay. Then do you have a presentation then?
Uh, I really don't have much to add from what Janine, um, offered, but I do have some responses to some questions that you've had. As far as the hours of the park, um, the, the, um, design was intended to, um, work within the hours of the park, so the dusk to dawn designation was what we anticipated. The, um, the sequo document, as she noted, was what brought forth the, um, concept of the ten p.m. thing, because the county has, you know, noise ordinances of not being a certain amount of noise, uh, before seven a.m. and not having a certain amount of noise after ten p.m. And so that designation was, um, what the... And so that designation was what the, the noise specialist used in their studies and their documentation of the potential noise at the park. But the, the bike park has no intention of functioning any time after the park hours that are designated.
Couldn't you have a special event, though?
You know, to be honest, at this point, my goals are, are to get the park built, not to have events, and so I suppose if the park at some point or some organization wanted to work with the, the park to produce an event there, then that certainly might be a possibility. But I would imagine that if that were the case, that the event producer and the park would need to, you know, work with the county to approve something like that and to mitigate any potential noise issues. As were noted by Janine in her presentation.
Okay, well, I think that could be handled with some simple language, that the bike park is tied to, or the hours of the bike park are clearly tied to the hours of the...
There's a gate, I'm sorry to...
Go ahead.
There's actually a gate at the entrance to the space where the bike park is going to take place that gets closed and locked every night, so anybody that was in the area of the bike park after the gate was closed would, you know, not be in accordance with the, the rules of the park and the laws of that area. So if there, if there was somebody there after those hours and there was a complaint that was brought forth, then law enforcement can manage that, just like anyplace else that had a public designation like that.
Well, the park has done events after dusk. There's been concerts and things, and I'm assuming they go through the county for special permits or whatever, but staff is shaking their head, so maybe they don't.
They're supposed to.
There are two gates, actually. There's two entrances and there's a gate at each entrance that allegedly are supposed to be open in dawn and closed at dusk.
Right, and, and my point is just to clarify, so if somebody doesn't get the wrong idea, like let's say they want to do an event at the bike park and then say, "Hey, it's just till 10," right? So then it becomes an arguable point, and so if we do just a little bit of clarification...
I'm, I'm completely comfortable with the idea, I mean, if, if this does come to pass and if there is, you know, a choice on your part to pass this, having that designation be attached to the approval is, is completely fine with us. That's always been our proposal, was that the bike park be available during park hours and nothing more.
Mr. Aguilar, there is a mitigation measure that restricts events till 7:00 PM as well. Okay. Any other questions of the applicant?
I just wanted to speak, can I speak to one more question that came up? The, the idea of the pedestrian trail versus bicycle trail part. I believe that you're talking about the loop trail element. Is that the one that you're concerned about? So the loop trail element currently is a multi-use trail that exists in the park, and we intend to do nothing more than to improve it so that it can be better utilized. It's currently kind of, it has like, it's a, it's a legacy trail, so it's basically just, it's happened over time by people who walk their dogs or ride bikes or walk. And the, the truth is that, you know, bicyclists have kind of a code of conduct when they're on a trail, that there, there is a respect that's paid towards people that are walking dogs, riding horses, walking in general, and so that, that code of conduct would continue with the use of that existing trail. That's not a trail that, that we're building from scratch for this development. It's a trail that we're, we're simply improving. And one of the, the parts of what we intend to do is, is do our best through signage and general education about the park to work with the, the users of the park to, to understand that there are codes of conduct and, and behavior that, that will make it such that a varied group of individuals can exist with one another in this environment and, you know, be happy together in, in the park environment. So that definitely is something that we've considered, but it's not something that isn't already happening. So if you go out there today, it's very possible that a disc golfer, a bicyclist, a dog walker, a walker, you know, lots of different people are using that trail as it exists already.
Okay, all right. Bob?
I was wondering if it would be beneficial to put signs on the west side of the loop trail saying that that was a restricted area?
It's fine for, I mean, if that's something that the commission feels would be prudent and necessary. The reality is, is that it isn't. The 80-foot setback was something that we placed on ourselves because we felt like it made us better neighbors with that group of homes that are to the west. So if, if you feel that it would be respectful of those homeowners to have some sort of form of, of, you know, signage that says, "Please be respectful of these people's privacy," or whatever it is, then we're certainly comfortable with the idea of considering some form of signage for them. There's, there's currently no restriction to this type of development right up to that fence, and so...
I understand that.
Yeah, so when we, when we chose that 80 feet, frankly, we took away some of the best terrain that exists for us to develop in, but, you know, with, we, we were aware early that there were some concerns from those neighbors about the idea of developing this there, and so we took it upon ourselves to try and provide some sort of a buffer for that.
Okay.
Will it be restricted from bicycle riding in that area? Because I could easily...
Well, there won't be any, there won't be any elements. I'm not going to tell you that somebody doesn't decide to go boondogging out there. And so in that, that being said, maybe it would be something to consider, some sort of form of signage that says restricted area, you know, not for bicycling use or something. And, like I said, I'm happy to consider any of those options that would help to mitigate concerns that those, that those neighbors have for this.
Yeah, I, I think that would be beneficial to the neighbors because people would be coming up there waiting for their turn to ride on that trail, and they'd be just riding all over.
So I want you to appreciate why we placed that element where we placed it. I don't have any kind of a, of a pointer or anything, but if you see the two individual orange markers where they kind of come in contact with the yellow marker, there are two little squares there that are the starting areas for, for that element. Those sit behind a grove of oak trees that, that will essentially block them from view of those neighbors' homes. And, and those elements are only like six feet tall, so it's not like they're, they're towering elements, but they, but they do, but they do enjoy a fair amount of privacy. The, the neighbors on the west do enjoy a fair amount of privacy from those elements because of that screening of vegetation that, that's currently there. That's why we chose that location for that element, because we were cognizant of their concerns about their privacy and their, and their view shed.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission? If not, I'll open the public hearing, and for those of you who'd like to speak, you could come down here and state your name and address, and there's two chairs there, so you can go two at a time. That way it'll speed up things, so if you come, state your name and address.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Sonia Backus. I'm the association manager for Valley Oaks Community Association, and the board of directors asked to me, for me to attend today to be able to voice their opposition to the current location of the bike park. The board asked me to represent them and the community. We had sent several letters to Western Gateway Park Board with copies to the board of supervisors in regard to the opposition and mostly requesting conversation and a seat at the table and information regarding the planning process. We eventually were invited to attend a board meeting at Western Gateway Park, but at that point, the decision had already been made and the approval had been completed for the board at Western Gateway Park to approve the bike park. So I respectfully submit that there is a significant impact to the property values and quality of life for these neighbors that are going to be right behind the park. With hours from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM with up to 40 riders at a time, the community was basically told that if they didn't like that type of activity, that they shouldn't be purchasing next to a park. But I again respectfully say that there's a big difference between buying next to a park as it currently is and buying next to a bike park with the level of activity that seems to be anticipated. So I appreciate your time. Thank you for hearing the board and appreciate your consideration of the opposition to this bike, to the location.
Which board is that?
When you say the board, it's your, this is the homeowners?
Valley Oaks Community Association Board of Directors, yes, and I'm the association manager.
That's right. You got it all.
Correct. And I have written authorization from the board members for me to attend and speak on their behalf.
Now, do you speak for the other board?
Western Gateway Park Board, yes. Thank you.
Hello, thank you for your time. My name is Glenn Woodruff, and I moved into Valley Oak Court about two and a half months I've been welcomed into the county and the, the area of Penn Valley very graciously, and my neighbors have shown concern for the bike park proposal. And in hearing some of the discussion today, some things have come to light that I think are of benefit. Now, I, I came up here from, I lived 59 years in Silicon Valley, deep in Allen Den Valley, which is in the south part of San Jose. So I've seen urban buildup, and it's inevitable, and I think the bike park is, is awesome. And I think that, you know, to some people's point, my neighbor's point, geez, they could have put it someplace else. Well, in doing some research on this, certainly this thing is coming hard and fast, and it's been through the process, and you have to go through a process for these things. Now, some things that have been addressed today that I think are important. One, gone to dusk on the hours, and certainly that needs to be, you know, changed. I mean, we can't have it at 7 to 10. It's too late. And now, talking about events, the gentleman that was here earlier as the applicant, he wants to get a park built. Talk about events later. And he knows apparently the process, and so therefore, if there's ever going to be an event out there, it's going to take a lot of approval, a lot of security, things to make it a safe and fun event for, for kids or for a tournament or for competition. And that's what kids do this stuff for. I mean, seriously, the real serious bike rider wants to compete. The serious basketball player wants to compete, the baseball player, the golfer, the disc golfer, they want to compete. I get that. One of the other things that, so, so the hour situation had, I think, has been addressed, and, and if it's got to go in, it goes in, dawn to dusk. I think that that's acceptable. I think, and I think for all of these reasons that have been cited, fire theft, safety, bad things happen in parks after dark, not before, pretty much, pretty much anywhere. And then the other thing about the loop, the, and, and the signs, now, here's what I propose there to be thought about, is that if it's just, like when you're going down the loop on the, the bike trail outside the park that the public rides on and walks on and dogs and people, there's a barrier, a, I believe it's one of these wire cable type barriers, where if you want to go on that side of it, you've got to, it's, it's work. You're walking, I got to bend down and I got to get under it, right? So it's enough to keep, it's enough to deter traffic, and it's not expensive. And it would ensure almost that nobody would, hey, that's a barrier there, there's a sign there, let's respect the neighbors back there. I think that that, that is a good compromise for some sort of a boundary between my neighbors that are across the street from me and their ultimate privacy, safety, security, and et cetera. Let's see, I think that that's, I know that Randy here has some other items, but I thank you for your time and thank you for welcoming me to Nevada County. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Randy Huth. I live at 10167 Valley Oak Court. Okay. I have no objection to a bike park whatsoever, but put it in someone else's backyard, not mine. I live, have two lots directly behind the park. The third one up is mine and the second one in. So there is no compromise on this issue for me, unfortunately, other than moving it. Well, yes, if the county would like to buy my property, that would be fine. I would be more than happy to sell you and then sell and go someplace else. At this point, I had someone, one of the pieces of the property next to me I bought as an investment, and that person since finding out about the bike park has since, the person I had that was interested in buying it has since backed out of that sale because of the bike park being added. I moved after looking for property in this area. My parents have been in this area for 30 years, so I'm not really new to the area, but I looked for property to move up here for over two years, and I picked this as my dream home to retire because of the dog park. And being within walking proximity to the dog park, there's a lot of people who use the dog, I mean, that, yes, they use, they go to the dog park and exercise their dogs off-leash there, but to get there, they also walk their dogs on leash and enjoy the ambiance and the exercise value for themselves as well as their dog in doing that. I would also argue that no one has asked, and I'm, I'm actually surprised there isn't, hasn't been any of the dog park people stepping up here because I don't think they realize the impact this is going to have on them. I don't, I think if you asked any animal behaviorist or dog trainer, they would say that the idea of bikes racing by, dogs on leashes is a, you know, prescription for trouble. There will, you know, that is the way dogs get, kids get hurt. The other thing that is of a really big concern to me is that who, you know, it's not, it's too close to the homes, but how are, and it concerns me because there's been times where I've had to call the sheriff before, and frankly, my response from the sheriff's office has always been, "Well, we'll be there in 45, half hour to 45 minutes." Well, I mean, if you have a kid laying there, you know, or kids fighting or whatever, that is not an adequate response time. How are they going to increase policing this area to make it so that it is okay for not only the neighbors but the other users of the park? I, I think that's a big question that needs to be addressed. You know, frankly, the whole thing, you know, you've got, you know, and, and this thing, yeah, it's nice to say, "Oh, well, we'll, we'll, we'll compromise on the time that the park is open, you know, it won't really be 10 o'clock." Well, you know, the fact of the matter is, is at 9 o'clock, if you've got bored, unsupervised teens hanging out over there... teens hanging out over there, you know, it's, who's going to monitor, again, who's going to monitor that? Who's going to be watching these kids? And then I had asked previously about the environmental impact study. It sounds like a noise study was done, but they're not talking about, you know, what about the foliage and things that they're taking out and what that's going to do to, yeah, in the park, it probably won't be too noisy. When I'm in a park and having fun, I make noise and it's not too noisy either. But living right on the other side of that with less foliage and less trees and this and that, it's going to be considerably noisy. They're not talking about, you know, they're not talking about that impact. And we never saw the results of that study. Also, you know, it was never asked if the neighborhood wanted to do an independent study of their own on the impact. What about the small animals in the area? What about the other foliage, foliage in the area that's being impacted by this? You know, I bought there because this was a peaceful, tranquil, you know, ambiance and that is being taken away. Had I known it two and a half years ago or, yeah, when I bought my house, I wouldn't have bought there. Okay, we've covered the thing about 10:00 p.m. I've said before, you know, why not put, why not put the air, the park, the, in an area like the ballpark or the open area up front where it would be easier to, for police to get in, fire to get in, and more visible to people as opposed to hidden away in the back. And more adults would be seeing what's, you know, it's all, it's great to have adult bikers here. I'm sure they can all monitor themselves. They're not the problem. We're talking about teenagers and gangs of teenagers. And like I said, again, many people like myself enjoy being able to walk in the dog park with our dogs on a leash. That area will be almost closed off. And as someone else pointed out, the whole thing about pedestrians and being, sharing the space with bikers. Yes, I've, I've had many whiz by me that aren't, in other parks that are not, may not know those rules you're talking about. I don't, I don't know what the problem with having a nice, you know, natural area is to people. I can't understand why they wouldn't want more, you know, hiking and walking back there. How is the county planning on addressing and monitoring the additional noise, the loss of privacy, the nuisance vandalism to our homes facing the park? Those would be my main questions right there.
Okay.
That's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Hello. I appreciate you letting me speak. My name is Steve Gillespie. I have three children that live here. I live in Nevada City. I'm a school teacher at Seven Hills Intermediate School and I've been a school teacher at the middle school level for almost thirty years. My principal specifically released me early to come here today to speak. He has currently been invited to participate in a, some sort of a commission that is studying ways to get kid, ways for kids to have things to do in Nevada County and in particular Grass Valley in Nevada City. So he felt that this would be a good use of my time. I currently run a mountain bike club at my school. We have about fifteen boys and girls that ride weekly from my school. They're very enthusiastic about it. There are numerous mountain bike clubs in all of the middle, I believe every middle school around here has a club. And we're in a way sort of farm teams for the NU Mountain Bike Team, which is nationally recognized as being, you know, one of the, one of the best mountain bike teams in the, in the country. One of our number one focuses in the, the mountain bike club is the teaching of trail etiquette. We absolutely understand and I try to instill in the kids that we understand that bikes get the bad rap for everything. I mean, when you have hikers and equestrians and bikes, it's the bikes that are going too fast. Generally, it's the bikes that don't slow down quickly enough. And so we're really pushing with the kids the trail etiquette, the idea of yielding the right of way and, and making sure that you don't spook horses or spook hikers. And, and the fundamental piece of that is that every bit of cycling we do around here is on multi-use trails. There are trails that are open to certainly hikers, most of them also equestrians as well. And with more and more people moving up here, as have been, we're finding more and more horses on the trails, in particular horses, which, and that's, that's the biggest danger is, is coming around a corner and spooking a horse. You don't want to do that. And so, the question becomes, I get from my students, is there any place where we can ride bikes where it's just going to be bikes? And, and here's an opportunity for a place where, where it's pretty much going to be a bike haven, where you don't have to worry about mixing with, with other people using multi-use trails. A spot where they can go and enjoy their time without, without putting a bad reputation on bikes, without worrying about you tearing up the dirt, you know, cyclists shouldn't go out after it rains, but of course they do and we get big divots and things like that. So, so there's that. We are known up here, if you don't know, this is, this is world-class mountain biking up here, Downeyville and places around here. People literally come from other countries to ride their bikes in our county. And it's something that, that I think is a draw for the county and, and any opportunity to increase that draw and encourage that sort of thing would, would be very positive. The, and then, and then, and I've heard this as, as long as I've been a school teacher and I am a parent, everybody's, you know, oh, these kids these days, these kids these days, all they do is get into trouble, all they do is get into trouble. Well, how about we create a place where kids can go, where they have something to do, a positive outlet, something where they can get rid of some energy. I, I don't believe there's going to be gangs of evil teen cyclists amassing at this park. I mean, I can't predict. But generally, people who are going as far as this to ride bikes probably just want to go there to ride bikes. I don't think they're looking for, for trouble. And, and any opportunity to give kids a recreational outlet, I think is, is a really positive, positive opportunity. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
My name is Caleb Lauren. I live on 1415 Martinsburg Lane, Penn Valley. I am in riding distance to the park and have been there many times from my home. And as a fifteen-year-old, soon to be sixteen-year-old Penn Valley, I don't know, young kid, I have, I adopted this as part of my eighth grade project last year with Richard Baker and had a really fun time and a lot of my classmates and fellow school people at Uber River Charter were very excited about it and happy to learn or at least hear the idea of a bike, of a bike park in Penn Valley. I think as a teen, as a teen and someone who is hoping to spend almost every day there during the summer or during days that I can when it's not raining and when the trails are fit to be rid, to be ridden. That was mentioned, that was, it was mentioned earlier that it is like a bike haven, a place for riders to safely ride as a bike and not have to worry about walkers and horses and other things that become, could, could become obstacles that usually aren't on the trails. I do understand the point of maybe high amounts of people in backyards and sound levels, but at the same time, if that is so much of an issue, there's such things as sound barriers of the sorts. I do see that, I mean, it could be an issue, but there are other ways to have that than having to change the location of the bike park or not have it at all. But that's just what I had to say and to show my presence as a fifteen-year-old in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Amy Young, 10441 Broken Oak Court, Penn Valley. My biggest objection right away also was the time. I don't, I don't see what good could happen at a park after dark. And I would like to see that clearly defined, not just one people, you know, a group of people says, ten o'clock, oh, but then I heard it was dawn to dusk. It has to be very clear. Who will monitor the trails and maintain them, AK, like picking up trash? Currently, Western Gateway Park, the play areas, I have four and a half-year-old twins and we frequent the park. They're dirty. We had to move from the, we were going to barbecue down at the lower barbecue area by the waterway, but we left because it was so dirty. We just couldn't make it work there. So we went up to the higher one and that's a little better. So I don't know, I'm ignorant of the current maintenance. It is a nice park, but there is, it is lacking and how will that, will we be stretching the resources too thin to keep those trails clean from trash wrappers? You know, kids, they do that. So, I know, because mine do. The people that are for the bike park, who could disagree that a bike park is great for kids? I don't. I'm like, yeah, my kids, that'd be great. But I would ask everyone to consider that they are proposing to build the bike park in the backyards or, excuse me, on, with a buffer, but very close to the backyards of these neighbors. I would be disappointed if I had bought there and my, my house is on, off of Penn Valley Drive, it's not, not adjacent to it, but you are, they are proposing to build a bike park in the backyards of neighbors. So Penn Valley will have a bike park in the backyards of neighbors or next to them. I would be discouraged at that. Finally, what is the cost of this bike park and who's paying for it? And I don't remember the specifics, but there was some environmental impact studies that this, I'm sorry, I don't know your name. Janine, you mentioned them and that their effects, I think if I remember correctly, it was something, the effect of the, the effects on the oaks will be monitored in a year or so? Am I on the right? Well, if that, if there are negative impacts, then what is the cost to mitigate that? If it's taxpayer dollars, then we have a right to know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Garrett Eckerling, you know, family doc. Don't have my white coat, but that's what I am. So you talked about the health benefits. I won't go into that in a, in a large way, other than, so I might add some other things. Hopefully, we all know that there aren't a lot of healthy outlets for kids and we're always trying to tell them to get out there and do something healthy and this is one way, one way to do that. And we don't have a lot of opportunities, especially down in Penn Valley for them. I wanted to add that Grass Valley Charter spends a week during, learning bike stewardship and building bike trails code of conduct, that's been mentioned. They remove themselves from the bike and walk, take off their helmets when horses are People now are traveling to Roseville, Truckee, Carson City, South Lake Tahoe. If somebody's going to come here from those places, they're not hoodlums and they're going to treat things well. They're not going to all come at once. The parks, this is going to be built by donations, not taxpayer money. The, there's not necessarily dust because it's all hard pack. The, the designers have done a really good job of making sure that there's a natural buffer, sounds like a lot of trees and foliage in between. As far as noise, oh, I didn't mention, I live, where do I live? 10760 Willow Brook Lane. I'm actually behind the rodeo and from my house, I can actually hear concerts that are going on at the park. So the noise from concerts is much louder than kids. And if you've been to the bike park, for instance, at Truckee Bike Park, there's not as much noise as you would believe because people are actually huffing and puffing and they're not yelling and screaming. They're going up and down, riding their bike. And, let's see. Ready Springs doesn't have a bike club because they don't have a lot of organization and this would really help out our community in that sense. The hours would be good if they were dusk to dawn, that would give the kids time to get home before dark. And they might also help if we're, if that area over there is better developed, might move out some homeless issues that we may have, promotes local business. The, I think once this is built, as every element in Western Gateway Park adds to the quality of Western Gateway Park, I think the homeowners will actually find that their property values will rise. The, one of the people that were opposing it talked about why, why is it being hidden away in the back? Well, it is being hidden away and so I think that they, they've explained that it is hidden away and so it shouldn't be a nuisance to them because it is hidden away. There aren't gangs of teenagers here. I came from Los Angeles, I know gangs of teenagers. Someone also mentioned not in my backyard, should be in someone else's backyard. That's not how things ought to be in, in Nevada County. We should be welcoming of everybody. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. There's another seat empty here if someone else is in, cares to speak, so we can keep on, keep the public hearing moving. All right, sir?
Hi, my name is John Qualia, 16994 Blue Sky Circle. I originally proposed this bike, this bike park to the Western Gateway Bike, or to the Western Gateway Park, really accepting and, and open to the idea of a bike park, the Western Gateway Board. One of the board members even, excuse me, went so far as to go to the Truckee Bike Park to get an idea of what I was proposing to her. I think what's happening here is a lot of people have ideas about what a bike park means to, you know, to the park and to their communities, to the neighborhoods. And it's a really good idea to either, you know, look on YouTube or even take a trip to Truckee and, and look at the bike park that's up there. This was really, this idea for a bike park in Nevada County was inspired by the Truckee Bike Park. My family's been going up, they have two kids, we've been going there since my kids were, were really small. They start on Strider bikes and it's always been like the, the environment and the, of the bike park up in Truckee has always been a really family-friendly place. Some of the concerns with the, the noise, you wouldn't believe, it really is, it's not as loud as you might think of, of something like this would be. If you go to the Truckee Bike Park, you're not really overwhelmed by a lot of noise. It's people just, you know, doing their thing, maybe a little picnicking, stopping for a little bit, but not a noisy place. I wouldn't characterize it as that at all. The ten o'clock idea is, I don't think me or Richard ever had any idea to, to go past dusk for this kind of thing because, I mean, at ten o'clock, you're in the dark anyway. So I mean, there's nothing to see out there after, you know, eight-thirty at the latest. But, but even so, there's no reason to compromise this park and the importance of this park just for, for a couple hours here and there. I mean, this can go from, till dusk, it doesn't even have to start at dawn, but it's something that can easily be worked out amongst us. And, and to the people who, from the neighborhood, this is, you know, I know, it's, it's a stretch. You haven't seen anything like this, you're just thinking of the worst possible scenario. And I think you'll be surprised at how, it's, it's not what you're thinking. Let's see, studies were done, environmental impacts were paid for, we, you know, this was all money that Richard Baker and myself and other people was all, uh, money that, uh, Richard Baker and myself and other people, um, raised, you know, through friends, through other things to have these studies done, so, um, people who also were, um, um, in agreement with the bike park, who are, who are biologists and scientists, have helped us out with those studies and, and have given us discounted rates. So, studies have been done, we've, we've really done a lot of work to, to put these different features in places that are, that are, you know, hidden and as far as foliage, um, as far as, you know, again, our, our, um, our, our, our intention was to do things that really didn't, that had a very low impact on the property itself and on the sort of characteristic of the place. And it'll be a really, like, the, the, the people that we've talked to about actually building the, the, the features are really excited because we are trying as, as, uh, as best as possible to keep that sort of, uh, the cover of the trees and the foliage and really trying to work with what is there, so it's, it's gonna be a really low impact to the, um, to the property itself. Like Richard mentioned, with some of the starting mounds, will be completely protected by trees, so, um, that'll cut down noise and as far as view, uh, itself. Trail maintenance, of course, um, um, you know, this was really developed using, uh, Truckee Bike Park as a model and what they've done is, they've actually worked with the county to where they, the county hires, um, uh, two people to be the, um, caretakers of the park. And then what happens is that the, the bike park, every year, they do fundraisers and whatnot and they actually pay the salary of the, um, of the workers who are doing the work. So, uh, Richard and myself are, and, and a lot of other, uh, uh, mountain bikers in this area, uh, you know, people like, um, the Youth Bicycles of Nevada County and the bicyclists of Nevada County, uh, you know, we're people that, that we do, we do trail maintenance, uh, quite a bit here, you know, if you're, if you're talking about a tree down in the, in the middle of a trail, it's most likely one of the mountain biking clubs or a mountain biker going out there and cutting the tree and, and, and taking care of the trail, so, um, with this effort, it was always, we always wanted to do it with a community, uh, uh, the community in mind and have a community built up around it so that, um, because if, I don't know how many of you have had the, the opportunity to build a trail, but after you build a trail, you take on a certain ownership of that trail that is, it, it's, it's hard to explain, but you really do feel like you're a part of that, so, in the process of building this park, we were hoping to build that kind of, um, um, affinity and community around the, the park and so that people wanna, wanna maintain it and come back and maintain. There was a point brought up as well about, um, you know, people taking different courses. That's why we're, we're really concentrating on building this the way we are, there won't be any need to go off of the existing trails, um, you know, considering, you know, we've considered a lot of different things, the access, building little access trails, so we're really, um, you know, to, to cut down the amount of, of zigzagging and things like that that go on out there. You know, the other thing about, you know, I've, I've done a lot of reading about, uh, trail building and, and trails that are built in areas that are undeveloped and, um, they've had incredible successes with, with, uh, places i- in cities or, you know, suburban areas that are undeveloped and where people are illegally camping and, and living and from building trails and creating energy around the place, people have, they don't, you know, they don't want, you know, bicyclists and people walking and dog walkers, you know, people who are out in the woods who are living, they don't wanna have that, so by developing these areas, we, you, you take away some of that hiding potential for people and, which has been happening at the Western Gateway Park, that area, if you go out there, you will see evidence of people sleeping out there. And I think somebody else brought up the point of, uh, property value. This will bring property value to that next, that neighboring subdivision. You know, you'll have families who wanna live there and who wanna raise their kids because, look, right next door, we have a bike park, so, um, I think that there's a lot of, uh, possibility as far as like, you know, the valuation of the properties next door. Again, I'd just like to say, I know it's a stretch for some people to consider a bike park, especially if you have no, um, experience or you've never been to one, but, um, it is, it is something to, that's worth looking at and it, it is, it just takes on a different characteristic than say something like, uh, the skate park or something, you know? I take my child to the skate park all the time. The two are very different, these, the bike parks are, are much more family-friendly, uh, attracting a lot, a lot more families and that kind of energy, which the skate park definitely doesn't, you know?
Okay, we wanna get to the next person here, so if he could wrap up and we could get to the next person in here.
All right, well, thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir?
Uh, hi, my name is Scott Lay, uh, my address is one three six two six Day Road in Grass Valley. I'm the current Nevada County Superintendent of Schools. I've been an educator in Nevada County for twenty-six years and I founded the, uh, Clear Creek Elementary School District Mountain Bike Club. So, I come here, uh, understanding the fears of some of the people that spoke, uh, but I can tell you there's a surprisingly lack of, uh, areas for kids to participate in activities up here in Nevada County and we're always looking for more. You'd think in the foothills, we'd have an abundance of those and we don't. Western Gateway Park is one of those gems that we do have, it's used a lot for, uh, a lot of events. I think the mountain bike par, or the, the bike park is an exceptionally great idea. Um, I've been to the Truckee Park, I've been to one in Tahoe. I think the people's that are concerned, if they went there, I think they would, would see that it's a different crowd that will hang out there. Um, I think it'll increase, uh, the quality of the park, uh, and, and as the Superintendent of Schools, I'm always concerned, we need more activities for our youth, not less. I think this opens it up, I think to the question of maybe a more litter that was brought up, which I completely agree, when you go down to the park, there is litter. I think it would be great for a couple of our mountain bike clubs in the local area to adopt those trails and part of their service projects to clean up, but I think it will definitely enhance the park and I appreciate the Commission taking the time to listen to everybody to hear about it.
Thank you. Yes, sir? And there's another empty chair here, somebody else wishes to speak.
My name is Dwayne Strawser, five zero three Sacramento Street, Nevada City, current Mayor of Nevada City. I'm one of the many people, we have been struggling for years in Nevada County to find a location for a bike park. We've tried Grass Valley, uh, I met, uh, regularly Bob Richardson, past city manager, currently Tim Keizer. Uh, we have tried Martino Park in Grass Valley, too small of a footprint, we've tried Condon Park, we've tried Memorial, we have looked in Nevada City, um, always trying to find something for the quality of life for the citizens. Because I live in Nevada City and I'm elected official there, I'm not going to, uh, pretend that I'm here to judge what's best for the residents in Penn Valley, that, that's the priority. I have to set my bicycle, the bicycle side of my life aside and, and that's between Planning Commission, county staff, uh, the developer here, Richard, uh, and those residents to protect their quality of life, I agree with that. But Gateway Park, basically, over the years, has been, uh, a park that has screamed for attention. Um, we have promoted many bicycle races, there's an event called the Cyclocross Race, which is popular throughout the United States, and we are, we have been part of that series in Sacramento for years and we used to struggle to draw those folks up to have some of the events here in Nevada County and I had them both in Grass Valley and Nevada City and we had some of our, our Penn Valley customers and friends always calling me saying, hey, what about us? What about us? And the Gateway Park, um, board members many years ago called and we finally actually for five years ran a Cyclocross event in Gateway Park in Penn Valley. We utilized the existing trails that wound through the Disc Golf Park, uh, on the backside of the park, down there near where this potential bike park is being suggested and we had upwards of five hundred attendees from all over Northern California each of those years in Gateway Park and it brought huge amount of money down to the grocery store, the pizza parlor, the yogurt store, I mean, we got thank yous from those folks and nobody in Penn Valley even knew it happened. I mean, it was at, it was that quiet for that large and a bike park is very different. This wound through the entire Gateway Park property, around the amphitheater, down through the water crossing, over by the, uh, baseball fields and actually had little or no impact. The board worked with us to close the street down for those four hours that morning. A bicycle park, if you saw Truckee, is very self-contained, it's, it's just like a skate park, it's like going to a swimming pool. People that go there, they're in the swimming pool, they're in the skate park, they're gonna be in the bike park, um, so my hope would be it could be mitigated that they are not, these individuals would not, um, step on the multi-use trail out there, uh, you know, these cyclists don't want to do that, we don't want them to do that, uh, to put a bad light on cycling. I know at the Folsom Park down in Sacramento, they actually found that the dog park on the American River Path had twice the sound level as the bike park. And, uh, the dog park is very popular down there too, so I would hope something could be done to not step on the dog park user's safety as well as their, uh, serenity, again, their enjoyment, their quality of life. So, I'm not here to advocate that the park, uh, bike park be put in exactly where it is, I, I trust that Richard, the developer, um, county staff have determined that it is an adequate location, but I am here to advocate for a bicycle park facility of some type and I think Penn Valley and Gateway would be the perfect location that we have not been able to place for all residents in Nevada County and it brings attention to Penn Valley. Um, but obviously, that attention needs to be wanted by Penn Valley and by those residents and find a compatible way to do it. Uh, so I, I just hope and encourage you to find a way to place a bicycle park facility in, uh, Gateway where you do have your footprint and the square footage down there that we have not been able to find in the last twelve-plus years in Nevada City or Grass Valley. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Jerry Stone, uh, my address is one eight zero three one Penn Valley Drive in Penn Valley. I'm the president of the Dog Park Association and I have been so for the last four years. Uh, we've made a lot of improvements to the dog park since then and I'm all for development of the park. I think it's a great community asset and I've seen drug transactions near the dog park. If we had the bike park in there, they would not be able to hide in the bushes anymore. Um, I down, I'm down there every single day and it, last summer, it, it's just, it's terrible and you can't get help, you know, by the time you call the sheriff and all that, they're gone, they're gone. My, I think that they've done a, a great job in designing the bike park, uh, they've even gone so far as to say that they would put barriers in the northwest corner where our large dogs are, uh, to mitigate the dogs maybe running the fence line, you know, if they see the bikers coming by. My main concern is the parking situation, um, because we only have limited parking and they have talked about adding, I guess, fourteen more spaces, but if they have fifty people on a Saturday, then where are the dog park people gonna park? We can't be parking, you know, way down the road, they need to be close to the entrance to the dog park. Now, they did, um, today, I just learned that there is another, um, optional parking area where the kids could bike from the parking to the bike park, so if they would use that, maybe that would take, you know, take up the slack. But I would like to also, um, see if there could be some additional parking spaces, um, added to the plan for the bike park, just so that, um, the dog park users won't be, uh, slighted where they can't, you know, come to the park with their animals. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to voice their concerns? Not, I'll close the public hearing and, let's see, I guess, take it back to staff, there were a number of issues that were brought up and if you can, probably the developer can, uh, address some of them and staff can address some of them, so, staff first.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to address several of the comments that were made and hopefully clear things up a little bit. Um, noise studies are done at, um, property boundary lines. County standards require that noise, uh, be met at the property boundary line, so the study was not conducted thinking about the noise that would be, um, in the dual slalom tracks or in the beginner and intermediate pump track. The noise study took into account the noise that would actually be heard at the westerly boundary property line, so I, I wanted to make that clear, that, that, that noise assessment by the acoustical specialist was done according to the, the standards and regulations that those studies are done by and, and it wasn't for the noise generated inside the park itself, but it would be where that, um, impact would be heard. Additionally, there were questions about the biological impacts, um, animals and plants and wondering about, you know, having trails within these, um, you know, resources and, and biological diversity area. The biological study was done by a professional biological consultant that is on the county's qualified list to do those studies. They did a full study of all the plants that were found on site as well as animals that were found to be present, um, and found that the impacts with the design of the park would not, uh, would not negatively impact those resources. And then, as I mentioned, there were mitigation measures provided to ensure that, um, there weren't unintentional impacts, but I just wanna be clear that the design of the park really is meant to take advantage of the natural landscaping, it's, it's not going to go in and clear it out and concrete everything, it's going to remove as little vegetation as possible because they're wanting to enjoy Western Gateway Park on a bike. So, um, there, there's not going to be a quantity of vegetation and trees removed in order to place something, uh, new in there and, and kind of a barren landscape, so the existing biological resources will be, uh, maintained and protected. Um, a question was about how we're going to monitor noise. Really, the county does not monitor noise, it, if someone calls with noise complaints, um, then that'd be something we would have to look at, but as far as a project moving forward, we rely on the acoustical specialists and, uh, the science of sound to determine whether a project would have impacts or not. Um, it's not constant monitoring to, to see if there's an issue. I think were, those were the main questions that I wanted to address. Got more?
Sure. Um, Commissioners, before you get going, real quick, just, we'll let the applicant address how the, uh, trail will be maintained and, and such, that information, um, that's handled by the Park District and/or the users, but I do wanna, um, based on your, uh, direction, discuss potential amendments to the conditions of approval. Uh, the first of which would be Condition A fifteen, that's dealing with signage. Uh, based on Commissioner Johnson's input, I recommend adding language that says essentially, signage shall also be installed directing park users, that areas outside of designated trails are not intended for riding. Um, the intent there is to keep them on the trails and not riding at that buffer zone. Um, if that's comfortable with the Commission, we can move forward with that. The other one, uh, related to the bike hours, uh, is a little bit more complicated because that's a mitigation measure. Essentially, I would recommend, this is Condition A twelve, uh, which basically says post-bike hours, MM twelve eight bike hours of operation shall, and I would recommend adding follow existing park hours of operation, but at no time shall exceed and remove the words be limited to, the hours of seven AM to ten PM, Monday through Friday, and seven AM to seven PM, Saturdays and Sundays. Um, that would ensure, because of the vagueness of the dusk to dawn and enforcing that is difficult and in order to, um, you know, ensure that the, uh, sequoia impacts would not be exacerbated by the park use, I would suggest keeping the ten to ten, but knowing that, you know, the dusk to dawn hours would be superseded, um, the ten to ten time or the seven to ten time, if you will. Another way we do it to add the word, uh, whichever is more restrictive. If the Commission wanted to go that route, we would be required to add a finding to our SEQA document and I've typed that, or written that finding out, I would request that we take a short break and type that out for you before making an action. Uh, with that, I'll defer to the applicant to respond to the questions regarding maintenance and, uh, any other questions that he wants to respond to.
Richard?
I just had a couple of things I'd like to respond to relative to some of the comments that were made. Um, I, I appreciate everybody coming and, um, making their comments in this public forum and I, I know that that's not easy to do for people sometimes and I want you to all know that I did, um, you know, have been deeply considerate of the neighbors and their concerns of this project throughout. Uh, one, one, at one point, it was mentioned that the neighbors weren't made aware of the project, um, which was, um, surprising to me because I specifically- weren't made aware of the project, which was surprising to me, because I specifically found the addresses of every home on that court, both sides of the road, and wrote a letter, and put a map in the letter, and a complete definition of all of the elements of the bike park, and personally mailed all of those documents to every single person that lives on that road many months ago. So if they didn't get that, that would be very surprising to me. Separately, as far as monitoring and maintaining trash, we have gone and met with both Penn Valley Rotary, as well as the bicycles, bicyclists of Nevada County, which is also known as Bonk, and the youth bicyclists of Nevada County, which is known as Y-Bonk. And all three of those organizations have expressed interest in a continuing relationship with the bike park that would consist of stewardship, education, as well as maintenance of the bike park through overtime. And we currently have an MOU with the park district that says that if a bike park is developed, that the maintenance of that bike park would not be something that would be incumbent upon the park district over the course of its life. To speak to the cost of the bike park, it was brought up by Ms. Young, the bike park is going to be completely paid for by local donations. I've already, with some other people that we've worked with, Moss and some others, during the course of the last couple of years, raised, you know, many dollars throughout the community to pay for the noise study, the initial study by the International Mountain Biking Association of like the likelihood of this being a successful location for a bike park, biological survey, and a couple other items as well. But we've raised close to $10,000 locally to pay for those things. All of that has come from local donors and businesses that I actually, at the end of this, like to thank publicly for their donations, as well as some money that I myself have spent. And then also, I've spent time during the course of the design of this with the local fire department, transportation department, environmental health department, planning department, building department. I've met with the supervisor for that district on two occasions to discuss the project, to make sure that he hasn't been hearing negative things about the project, so that we weren't heading down a road that felt like it was inconsistent with the goals of the community. As far as the mitigation of the impacts to the biological, you know, aspects of the park, I think it was spoken properly by Ms. Martin, that we did have a study done by StanTech, which is an international consulting engineering group. We spent approximately $3,700 for a biological report that considered every single aspect of that area, both in the, you know, mammals, birds, insects, plants, soil, all those sorts of things. And it was determined that there weren't any special species that were there that we should be concerned about, other than the few major oak tree elements that, and we do not intend to remove trees in order to make pathways for the bike park. We intend to make pathways between the existing trees, and there would be some modest amount of trimming of those elements in order to make it safe for the riders, so that they weren't, you know, hitting limbs as they were riding and things like that. But there wouldn't be any significant removal of that vegetation, as well as there wouldn't be significant amounts of soil that was either removed or brought to the site from offsite. Most of the elements would be developed with soils that were either found at the site or on the existing grades, and that's kind of one of the beautiful things about this site, is that it has all of the elements that are, you know, there, that are naturally in the landscapes to make it a successful development. As far as the noise is concerned, I think Ms. Martin made a good point, that the noise study is done from the property line. The reality is, is that if we were to have done it from the actual point of impact of the noise, which would be the house, say, it'd be another 30 feet away, and the noise study person said that the likelihood is that actually the noises from the bike park would be less than the noises that they already experienced from Highway 20, which is a fairly significant effect on their property that you can see that goes right along that northern edge of their property there. Oh, I just wanted to make a point of, well, one last thing about the parking, in response to Ms. Stone's point, who I, you know, I also met with on-site. We had a very nice meeting at the site and discussion about some of the concerns that the bike park, or, I mean, the dog park people had about the idea of a bike park. And I feel like we kind of came to terms with some of their concerns, and we actually did make some revisions to the locations of the elements based on some of her concerns, and ran those changes by her before we made our final submittal to the county. So we have been working very closely, I feel closely enough at least, with that group, to understand what their concerns are, and have proposed some mitigations to potential impact of our activities on their animals. The parking piece of it, you know, I mentioned to Ms. Stone, because she asked me about that earlier, our goal really is to park there less than we park in the major parking elements of the park system. We'd really like to try and educate the users of the bike park to utilize the main parking lots in the center core of the park, and then ride their bicycles from their cars to the bike park in order to take away the potential impact of that, you know, extra parking that may be taking place. We do intend to expand an existing parking area there with a, you know, properly graded gravel surface, which is consistent with what's there now. We will be adding three ADA compliant parking stalls that'll be, you know, formed and poured in concrete and striped properly and signed properly. There will be an ADA compliant area for people to go and watch the bicycling elements that are occurring there, so we have concern ourselves with that as well. Basically, I think that that mostly speaks to everything that, I just wanted to add one element, which was that I did talk to the Penn Valley Downtown Business Association, and I found that there are a lot of people that are business owners in that community that are in favor of this because of its potential for an economic, you know, development for the Penn Valley area. If you have, you know, a large group of people that have an interest of coming there, frequently the likelihood of them, then, like was mentioned before, stopping and buying a sandwich, or, you know, getting something to, you know, picnic with down there seems pretty high. And then there is a lot of growth of, you know, garden stores and other sort of elements that are happening in Penn Valley more and more now, that I think, you know, bringing people from Nevada City, Grass Valley, and some of the other outskirts into that area, and making them aware of those businesses would be beneficial to the community.
Okay, thank you. Staff? You would like a little five-minute break now to finalize the language, or?
Unless there's, unless there's any additional questions of the commission?
I have a couple of comments.
Sure.
Yeah, so do I.
It's the timing. I don't know which hours you're going to be coming back with. It's the hours. Seven to 10, to me, just doesn't seem reasonable. Seven doesn't seem like it's an active time of the, a time that you allow active activities to occur near residential areas. I mean, we don't allow construction, I think, at that time. It's more of a passive time in the morning. You know, eight o'clock seems like a much more reasonable time, and I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around the fact that you're saying we have to adhere to these hours of no later than seven to 10. But I think that doesn't give the greatest clarification as to what is allowed.
I agree. It's within your purview to admit or modify that condition, make it more restrictive if you feel that's appropriate. Staff is happy to make those changes.
Okay. Because dawn to dusk, I think, is never clear to me. I mean, if I'm out there having a good time, dusk is gonna go probably till 11. I mean, it's like, you don't want to end it.
What are you having in the next party?
Well, okay, can I piggyback?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So, yeah, seven o'clock in the summertime on a Saturday also seems a little shy, because it's gonna be so light out. It's still light until nine-ish. So, yeah.
Staff's got a built-in thing for that. If it's not noisy, they can go later. Am I correct?
Correct.
So how does that get implemented?
So according to, unless you want to answer this, according to condition A-12, it essentially says, "These hours shall remain in effect unless and until a new noise assessment is conducted at this location after the bike park is constructed and established," which shows that the actual park park use does not exceed the evening noise standards. Said noise assessment shall be submitted to the Nevada County Planning Department for review and approval prior to allowing the bike park hours to be extended to match the regular Western Gateway Park hours.
You see, that's where I kind of have a little bit of a problem with the noise study. I think the noise study was done where it's assumed that there's still 50 people out there on a Saturday, correct? So that doesn't seem totally right. I think, you know, throughout the day, if there's 50 people out there, by the time seven o'clock rolls around, that's dwindled. People have to go home, you know, young people, whatever, and adults, too, you know, go home, or go to the barbecue, or, it just seems like 50 people at seven o'clock on a Saturday is an unreasonable target for that study. So I don't necessarily agree with the study. And so that's why I'm thinking, in my personal opinion, if this commission was to entertain, not on the Sunday, but on the Saturday, you know, the park closing. So instead of restricting it at seven, because how the hell are you gonna do that? Oh, it's seven o'clock, we gotta shut this gate. Who's gonna do that exactly at seven o'clock on a Saturday? Whereas if you're allowing the park to be open on a Saturday until the main gate is closed, I mean, that makes a heck of a lot more sense, especially when you go to try to enforce this. So anyway, those two items, I just think, because I don't agree with the study, and I think it's too restrictive, and also the logistics of closing the park on Saturday at seven, when it's still light, that may cause more of a problem.
Commissioner Aguilar, the restriction is signage that says you need to, after 7:00 p.m., the bike park is closed. And so it's, the county's a complaint-driven typically. I would anticipate that the gate doesn't get closed at seven, and therefore, if people are still riding the park, we will get a complaint, and then we'll investigate that complaint. If it's substantiated, we'll have to come up with other measures. The, changing the time to later than seven results in the need for some noise attenuation measures or other things that relax the SEQA requirement, if you will. Most likely, I don't know, like council comment, if I'm incorrect. Changing that to make it less restrictive would likely require recirculation under the rules of SEQA. If we want to make it more restrictive, it doesn't require that.
Well, you know, I mean, I think it might be a moot point. I just want to put that out there. I mean, the other commissioners seem, you know, okay with the restriction at the seven, it seems like to me, but I just wanted to throw that out there, that I don't really agree with that study.
Well, I didn't either. I mean, it seemed unreasonable on a weekend.
Right.
But shut it down at seven o'clock, whereas Monday through Friday, you ride till 10.
Right.
It seemed quite reasonable.
Well, let me, let me try something here, because I know the park has their own set of rules, and it's dawn to dusk. Somebody goes out there in the morning, opens the gate. I know I've been there before they've opened with my dog, and we wait, and then at night, at some point in time, they come out and close it. Can't we just say that it follows the park policy in terms of morning and closing hours, and leave it at that, and therefore, it's a little on the vague side, but I don't...
That seems reasonable to me.
I mean, if the park's gonna close, you're done biking. If the park's gonna open, go bike. Real simple. That's the way everybody operates out there now, anyway.
Yeah.
But according to staff, if we do that, then it has to go back to SEQA. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Oh, come now.
Because we've identified a potential impact associated with noise and the number of users that is anticipated to use the park on the weekends, we've established a mitigation measure to ensure that that doesn't result in a potentially significant impact. In order to relax that, it's my understanding, we'll have to revise the SEQA document, reroute the document. And a provision is already made, as read in the record, that allows them to come back to us with a noise study that shows that, documents that they aren't exceeding those noise standards, and allows them to operate from dusk to dawn, or potentially to 10:00 p.m., unless the commission restricts that to a different number. So...
Isn't it a negative deck?
It's a mitigated negative declaration.
So can't we...
SEQA allows you to make it more restrictive, but if you relax those standards, we have to study the impacts of relaxing those standards. And the technical study provided to staff that was used to support staff's findings documents that the impact would be significant after 7:00 p.m. on the weekend.
Okay, so we haven't accepted that yet, of course. So you're saying that if we change that, you think it's a significant change?
If you change it and make it more relaxed and less restrictive, then the SEQA document is not adequate. It doesn't adequately review that change, and it requires that we amend that, and then reroute that, circulate that for another period of 20 days, and then develop potentially other mitigations to ensure that that impact does not result in continued significance.
So how would we have avoided this otherwise? I mean, because it's a negative deck. It's not like it's a...
It's a mitigated negative deck.
Mitigated negative deck, yeah. So it just seems like this is the time where, you know, if we're gonna change that, we would change it at this meeting.
Well, I think, I think staff has provided provisions for allowing them to get to where the planning commission is desiring, that they need to prove to the planning department that they won't be exceeding the county's noise standards.
Yeah. What do you think as a primary?
So, the report was done using the anticipated user numbers. Like with any use permit or amendment to a permit, we're required to find out, you know, what is the use and what's the intensity of the use. So the numbers provided to the noise specialist were, on the weekends, we think we'll have 40 to 50 bike park users. So the study was done using bike park numbers to figure that out.
Okay, so I'm saying, and I don't know if my fellow commissioners are gonna agree with this, but I'm saying it's less of an impact. So I don't think that the numbers are 50. I think that the numbers at seven o'clock might be half that. And so if we, if the numbers are half that, and then we're relaxing the hours, so potentially, that could be a wash. Because, you know, we're assuming that I'm, you know, that my comments are making it more restrictive if they go that way.
Just to be devil's advocate, I mean, the numbers could be twice as much as the anticipated users as well, on the other side of the coin. So we've established a anticipated number of users by the district, their studies, supported by those numbers, and our SEQA document is supported.
Who gave them the 50?
I believe that's from the applicant.
The applicant provided that.
So logically, we don't, I don't disagree with your statement. It's just...
Well, okay, so if the applicant thinks, if you think on Saturday that there's gonna be 50, then at seven o'clock at night, then we have to stick with this then.
I can speak to the reasoning...
Ma'am, the public hearing is closed. So now it's just a discussion among staff and the applicant and the commission. Thank you.
I can speak to the reasoning behind the choice for the number. It was based on attempting as best we could to be thoughtful about the neighbors. And so we were, we were trying to, at that hour, at seven o'clock at night, which I'm in, kind of, in my house, it's dinner time, we were sort of assuming that if there were a large number of people, say 50 people at this park, would that be a reasonable number of people for that neighbor 110 feet away from... feet away from any of these elements to have to, you know, deal with that type of a noise encumbrance? And so, and so we, like I said, I could have said fifteen, and we probably would have been able to stay later, but our reasoning was that we were attempting, you know, to make an application that was thoughtful towards the development of the plan, but also thoughtful towards the environment for the neighbors.
Thank you.
Bob?
Um, I think everything was discussed, but the way I see it is, the applicant gave staff their requirements. Staff made the report out based on that information, but they also gave them an out. Whereas if they had less noise and needing to be longer hours, is all they have to do is get a noise monitor done, and then they can come back to the staff. And they wouldn't have to go back to SEQA then, would they? No.
That's where I'm losing it here. Pardon me. I'm just the product of the LA school system, so sometimes these things are way over my head.
Maybe you've been at Reddy Springs.
Nothing but a C-plus student, too. So anyway, let's go on. I'm having a problem understanding this. Okay, so the EIR or the negative declaration in the study was done based on a ten o'clock time?
It was based on the number of users and the amount of noise produced by that number of users.
Right, and it allows them to go to ten o'clock.
During the weekday.
During the weekday. Okay. So that's this much.
Right.
It's confusing to me why you have to go back and do an environmental study to reduce the time. It would seem to me to make sense if you wanted to increase the time. Then you've got, then you've opened the issue up. So we're being more restrictive by this. Why do we have to go back through this hoop again?
Let me clarify. The study that could be submitted after the park is constructed will allow them to increase the time, to extend it to the time that they're restricted.
Can I try and clarify? Because I think I understand where your confusion is. So the number of riders during the week, the Monday to Friday, is designated at far fewer than the fifty. So that's why, so that the likelihood of there being a significant noise impact with far fewer riders allows during those days to have a longer day.
Got that.
So the likelihood of the highest impact is going to be on a weekend, obviously, when people have more time to go out there. So when we then layer on a much larger population of people, a much more, a larger likelihood of a larger sound impact, that's why the time comes back to seven.
Got it. Here's my concern. Wait a minute.
Okay, sorry.
My concern is not noise. Well, that's a concern, yes. My concern is, it's open. And for those hours. And other things besides noise, in addition to noise, happen. I'd rather that the park, the entire park, close down when the park utilizes its own rules and says dawn to dusk. Whatever that means to them, they've defined it. They go out there, they open their gates in the morning, they close them at night. End of story.
May I chime in? Realistically, we've felt that that is what's going to happen.
It is gonna happen, because you're not gonna be able to get in the park when the gate's closed.
Correct. So our study was based on the hours that are provided are Nevada County noise standards, which have specific times for daytime noises, and those daytime standards have, you know, a specific level of noise. And then the level changes from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM for the evening noise standards. So the study was meant to show that there's compliance within certain hours of the day and potential non-compliance during other hours of the day. So while we do believe that the bike park will run with typical park hours, you know, perhaps I could have written that differently to make it more clear that the bike park will run with park hours, but what we...
You can't do that now, though, without going through another bureaucratic step. Is that correct?
Chair James, staff has made some suggested language that would match it to the park hours, but also keep the restrictions on those hours based on the SEQA study, whichever is more restrictive. I'm happy to type that up for the record.
Okay, are you finished, Paul? Do you want to add something more?
No, I just wanted to give Tyler a little input. No, no, a little input. Instead of putting whatever's more restrictive on the sign, it's like up to or whatever, you know. I don't know. I think that there's a...
Oh, in terms of verbiage?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay. Well, I guess this is the time to provide it to him, because Tyler's going to shut down here in a minute and start working on it. So, but following up on that, I mean, the signage, I agree, Paul. That would be good to hear from that. And then also, I think I also heard offered to do education, that this would be the first facility on the western side of the county, and that maybe orientation, you know, annually, there would be some type of activity to engage people or kids that might want to use it, so they know how to use it responsibly and safely. And that it becomes an event, you know, that people want to come to the park at this time of the year, because this is when they have the safety event or whatever, that people might be able to better utilize the facility.
Okay, so we're gonna take, you need five minutes?
About five minutes. And then I would like to note that Commissioner Duncan, you did mention an 8:00 AM start time.
I did. Seven AM just seems to me to be a bit early for an activity adjacent to residential area.
I'll make some changes and see what you guys think.
Are you thinking bicycle system, including the loop trail, to eight o'clock in the morning?
No, I think that's a passive walking thing that people do anyway. Yeah. But, I mean, it's like the head-to-head, you know, when they're going down, at seven seems a bit early. Maybe not for them if it's hot, but...
We'll take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bring the Planning Commission back to order. And I'll turn it over to staff to review the new language regarding the hours.
Okay, so the proposed change would be to Condition of Approval 12. It would read "Post Bike Park Hours." Bike Park Hours of Operation shall follow existing park hours of operation. At no time shall exceed the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Saturdays and Sundays, whichever is more restrictive, and shall be noted on bike park signage. Additionally, we're proposing to add language to Condition of Approval A15 that would add signage shall be installed directing bike park users. That areas outside of designated trails and features are not intended for biking activities. If you agree to these changes, staff would change Condition of Approval A1 to reflect the new timing. And then you'd have to make the revised SEQA finding, we would add.
There was one additional item that the discussion came up, was that there would be some educational format proposed that the applicant offered.
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
Is that acceptable?
No, no.
Is that okay? Okay, sorry.
Okay. We're happy to add a condition. It's kind of hard for us to monitor, but I guess we could say that...
It's a condition of approval, and it's for the applicant that they know what their obligations are, and they have offered it. I think they understand the importance of educating the users as to how to safely...
Would something along the lines of annually, the park district shall host an educational workshop which...
Probably the bike park operators, not the... I don't think the district is a party to this.
So I'll try again and let the applicant obviously agree to that or not. So annually, the bike park operators shall host a...
Educational workshop.
...workshop to educate riders on adequate biking etiquette, et cetera. And I think we could crap it up if they're agreeable to that.
Which riders?
The bike riders.
The park bike riders.
Twelve-year-old kid down the street in Penn Valley?
I think it'd be available to anyone.
I mean, okay.
I think this is a concession to the homeowners that are adjacent, that they feel that their interests are being represented, and that the operators of the bike park are sensitive to that, and they want to ensure that there's a reduction of potential conflicts.
Perhaps we could go through the two conditions that have been amended and add a third one for the commission to vet and approve prior to making an action.
Well, I'm okay with that. I mean, you know, because if they're the main users and, you know, yeah, that's good. That's good, because, you know, the younger ones will follow suit.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Can I see that "Hours of Operation" on the screen again, please? So you actually want the sign to say that, "Shall follow existing park hours of operation"? I mean, but "At no time shall exceed," is that the intent?
Would you like it to say something different?
Well, I... No, not necessarily. I mean, you know, you could have a sign, and it says, "Park Hours, 8:00 to 10:00, 8:00 to 7:00," you know, with Monday through Friday and all that stuff. And then a little asterisk underneath that say, "Shall, you know, as per whatever this is code so-and-so, follow the existing park hours of operation but shall not exceed." I mean, you know, it seems like sometimes the signs do that, but honestly, I don't want to put... This is a friendly... This is... The whole idea is that this is a recreational thing, and then... And then we make it kind of... I don't know, bureaucratic or something. That's not the right word. It just seems... It seems so uninviting, whichever is more restrictive, right? I mean, not a comment on... I think there's more... I'm sorry to say this, I'm not thinking straight, I guess. There's a more tactful way of putting it and still making the message.
Commissioners, if I just jump in, I don't know that that language is verbatim of what we need engraved on a sign. I mean, I think the point is that the hours of operation are 8:00 to 7:00, or 8:00 to 10:00, and if the park is closed, that supersedes the time. And we can work with Mr. Baker to come up with some signage that gets that point across. I don't know that we're going to fit all that language on a...
Okay.
...one-foot-by-two-foot sign.
Thank you.
Paul, do you want to work with him on that?
They know the intent. Richard can... Yeah, he'll take care of that, yeah.
I just wanted to ask one... I have one thought. Your point about education, two things. One, we intend to partner with Bonk and Y-Bonk in the development and care of the facility. And their whole reason for being is education about bicycling and how to act as a bicyclist and how to be a good steward of trails and things like that. So just to let you know that that's the very reason why I have reached out to them to be a partner in this project. I have no intention of it being Richard Baker's Bike Park. I want it to be the community's Bike Park, and Bonk and Y-Bonk are the right organizations to sort of steward this bike park, because they're the county bicycle advocacy groups. Secondly, I would not be comfortable without them being here, having any Condition of Approval state that the Western Gateway Park group was responsible for that education piece.
Right.
Because I specifically told them when we began this process that I wouldn't encumber them with anything associated with managing the bike park. And so I just wouldn't be comfortable with that being a mitigation. I would prefer that it would say that the Gateway Bike Park Group, if that was what you intend to have it state, be responsible for some form of education. And we do intend to have lots of signage that basically says, "Don't be a bad patron." You know, "This is how to act." There actually are signs on many bike parks that are like Code of Conduct, you know? Don't yell loud, don't ride in front of other people, don't be aggressive. Like, there's lots of things like that. So there's going to be a lot of educational aspects to our signage already, in just like teaching people how to be good neighbors, good stewards, good patrons of this facility. So just to help you to understand that we're not just going to dig a bunch of trenches in the ground and say, "Hey, go get after it." We're going to actually like build something that's professional, that has rules, that is cared for, and that's our goal.
Okay. I think that was our understanding, but I think it would be good to memorialize it, that there will be educational...
Sure, and I'm 100% fine with that.
And... But it also speaks to the adjacent property owners that, you know, if there's an issue, they can talk to you, and you can figure out, "Is this something we need to include in our educational component?"
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Bob?
What time does the dog park open? Seven. So we're going to have a gate that opens at seven. Bike parks are not allowed to open until eight. There's no way he's going to do that. That's all right, I understand. I just wanted to understand the logistics of opening the gate at seven, but telling people on bicycles that they can't ride their bicycles inside the park till eight.
Isn't that unusual, Bob? I'm in a park, to have certain activities regulated at different times. I mean, compliance, I don't think there's anyone in there enforcing compliance on anything, though. I mean, for that matter, people can walk or ride into the park at four in the morning, whether the gates open or not.
So the best we could do is say, "No organized activity till eight."
Get some nods of assent from the staff there.
Well, Richard, why did you ask for seven?
I didn't. Seven is part of your noise ordinance. That's what we spoke about before. The problem with the way that the noise ordinance is set up for such things is this, is that they don't take into account things like dusk to dawn, like when gates are open, things like that. Basically, all it's stating is that at seven o'clock in the morning... Before seven o'clock in the morning, you can't be a certain level of loud. After seven o'clock, you can. Until 10 o'clock, you can't be a certain level... You can be a certain level of loud, but after 10 o'clock, you can't. That's the ordinance. We just did a noise study because it was requested of us that basically proved that on a weekend with a projected number of people, that we would be louder than would allow us to go to 10:00 p.m. That's all we did. It was kind of a... You know, frankly, I spent $1,500 of the community's money on a noise study that I just, you know, I think we could have just been rational and said, "The thing's open from dusk till dawn." But that's fine, you know, we did what we were asked to do, and I get what your guys' concerns are. I frankly think you should just say that it's open during the hours of the park, personally, but, you know, it's my own personal opinion. I just... I understand what you're going through, so...
And the way I understand it, you can do that, but first you have to build a park and have another study made to show that at seven o'clock, you're not louder than the 55 decibels or...
And that's fine, if that's what you would require of us, you know, I can raise the money to do that at that time, if that's a requirement. I'm certainly not going to like tell you, "Okay, well, I'm done." So, I mean, if that's a requirement, I feel like that's a better way to solve this than all the other, frankly. I think if it were my recommendation, I would say, "Tell me to say that it's open during the hours of the park, and if, you know, within..." If within, you know, once all the elements are built and the thing is up and running, we do another noise study to determine if that's reasonable or if we need to mitigate.
Yeah. The problem is that we want to just keep moving forward with this.
I get it.
Yeah. So, well, it doesn't matter... The eight or seven doesn't matter to me in the morning. I mean, I think it's... I'm okay with eight, too, so it doesn't... I mean, I understand Bob's, but whatever the pleasure is.
If it's not the commission's desire to go with the eight, I understand. I thought it just might be more tenable for the residents.
I think it's motion time. And this is in my district, so I can't make a motion. Do we have one? Okay. I'll make a motion, I suppose.
Page 14, Paul.
Page 14, yeah. And staff will help me out with the changes, please?
I'd also like to comment, on the face of it, that I think it's a great idea that we are distributing amenities throughout the county. That we have Empire Mine, and there certainly are a lot of bike people who use that area. Penn Valley is lacking, they don't have this. And I think it's distributing the wealth, so to speak, among the community, and bringing an opportunity to folks that may not have it, or may not have the economic ability to go have someone drive them up to Highway 20 or to Grass Valley. So I think this is a good opportunity for those people in the community, and I don't mean just kids, I think for everyone. Biking is good for most people.
Okay. So, after reviewing and considering the proposed mitigated negative deck, and adopting the proposed mitigated negative deck attachment two, EIS 17-0010, Attachment two, and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, Attachment one, pursuant to Section 15074 and 15097 of SEQA, making findings A through C. I think we have to add another section in there, right? Not this one.
On the screen, pursuant to Section 15073.5.
Yeah. Did I say that?
Sure.
Sure.
You did. I'll second it.
Commissioner Aguilar.
Yes.
Commissioner Duncan.
Yes.
Commissioner Jensen.
Yes.
Chair James.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Management Plan MGT 18-0008 to allow disturbance within the Landmark Oak Groves and near Landmark Oaks and seasonal drainage, subject to the attached mitigation measures and conditions of approval, which have been incorporated into the mitigated negative declaration, EIS 17-0010, for the amendment to an approved permit, and making findings A through B, A and B, pursuant to Section L, Roman numeral 2, 4.3.3.3B of Nevada County Zoning Code.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Aguilar.
Yes.
Commissioner Jensen.
Yes.
Commissioner Duncan.
Yes.
Chair James.
Yes.
Let the record reflect the modified conditions of approval as discussed at the hearing.
So ordered. Yes, and that was my intent. I'd like to make a motion to improve the proposed amendment to the approved permit, AAP 17-0005, subject to the attached conditions of approval, shown in Attachment one, or as has been modified at this public hearing, making findings A through L, pursuant to Section L, Roman numeral 2, 5.6.G., and L, Roman numeral 2, 5.2.C. of the Nevada County Land Use and Development Code.
I'll second this.
Commissioner Aguilar.
Let's see, this is the management plan. Yes, of course. No, this one, I'm sorry, this is... I should have said "as modified," right?
I believe you did.
You did. You did.
Okay. Yes.
Commissioner Jensen.
Yes.
Commissioner Duncan.
Yes.
Chair James.
Yes.
Okay. Somewhere, there's an agenda here. Now, just to clarify, I mean, the "as modified" was, you know, the signage, right? That's one thing. And then... But we were staying with the seven to 10 and all that stuff, right? That's...
My understanding is you changed it to eight, but...
Yes. The verbiage that was in there was "eight."
Okay, was that your understanding?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, yes. Good.
For the record, there's a 10-day period on that action. For the record, there's a 10-day pill period on that action.
Is there an opportunity for me to say one last thing? Just one second? A few more than one second?
I'll give you three.
Okay. I just would like to thank a number of donors that have given money to the project, and I think that it would be helpful for you to recognize the support that it's received. Besides myself and my wife, Moss, who is here, me, LaBreen, Holly Hermanson, through the Nevada County Office of the Superintendent of Schools, Cindy Palowski, Mike McCray, Pete's Pizza, my office, Sightline Architecture, The Event Helper, Theo Selectric, Pamela Esman, Casey Wood, Weiss Landscaping, DeVal Consulting, John Payne, Brennan Johnston, Penn Valley Rotary, who gave us $2,500, Andrew Palowski, Jane Reagan, Briar Patch Co-op, Kimberly Durso, All Phase Heating and Air, Y-Bonk, Junior Ag Services, Sarah Lauren, and Dimitri and Kendra Proanna, also involved in the development of this application and a lot of the planning and stuff that went into it, John Quaglia, who spoke earlier, Lisa McCandless. We worked very closely with Nancy Pierce of the Western Gateway Park, and we also worked very closely with Bob Klein, who at the time was the president of the Penn Valley Rotary Club. And I'd like to also thank you all for your time and effort and for the effort and time of the Planning Department, who has been working with me on this project for approximately two years, I think. It's been quite a long haul, so thank you very much.
Okay.
Commissioner, Chair, I just want the record to reflect that there is a 10-day pill period on that action.
Right.
We're waiting for you to bring that up, Tyler.
I got told to bring it up again.
And thank you for reminding us. Okay, upcoming Planning Commission meetings.
Oh. Do we have one coming up in June?
Commissioners, I don't believe we have anything scheduled in June. I wasn't here for your last hearing, but these chambers will be closed in July through August. We may have a truckee hearing during that time, if it all comes together.
Oh, that's right.
But we don't have anything currently scheduled for June, so it's probably unlikely that we'll meet again before July.
Okay.
And then that would be likely truckee.
I think there's an opportunity to potentially have the first meeting in July here, which is around July 10th or 12th. And then this room closes on July 18th. So there's one more potential here, and if not, we'll potentially be in truckee end of July or early August.
Is there a Tykert project coming?
There is. We're in the process of reviewing the admin draft EIR, and we have that in hand, and so that could line up for about that time period. It may be a little later than that because we haven't put the draft out for public review yet. But that one is in process and moving.
That would be good to conduct a field trip up there.
Okay.
Do that. What about Dark Horse? That golf course coming together there?
We have not had any movement on that application since late last year. We went out for an RFP for an EIR on the project. We got one proposal, and we shared that with the applicant, and they were considering the cost of that EIR and have not responded with any authorization to move forward in order to get that contract in place to start the EIR. So it's kind of, or it has been, on hold since November, December, and waiting for the applicant to decide how and if they want to move forward.
Wow, amazing. And there's... Are there any large housing developers looking at?
Not within the county. If you read in the paper, there's a couple of proposals trying to get off the ground in Grass Valley and Nevada City. But in the county, we don't have any... Correct me if I'm wrong, anything over a parcel map at this point in time.
Thank you.
Okay, any announcements? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Paul Ossinfer?
Aye.
Aye.